Good evening. I would like to welcome everyone to the Smyrna Municipal Planning Commission meeting for November 4th, 2021. I will now call this meeting to order, and I believe we have Tony with a prayer tonight, and Andrew with the pledge. You'd stand with us?
Most gracious Father, we just thank you so much for this country that we live in, Father, and this town that you blessed us with. Father, we thank you so much for your son and the sacrifice that he made for our sins. Father, we just ask that you go with us tonight in this meeting as we conduct the city's business, that you just guide us in our actions and our decisions, and that we just bring glory and honor in all that we do to you, Father, in Christ your son's name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys. Kevin, citizen comments?
None tonight.
Our next agenda item is approval of the minutes of the October 7th, 2021 meeting. Counselor, are the meeting agenda minutes in order?
In order as it's performed, Kevin.
Okay. Commissioner, have we had a chance to review them? And if so, I'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Have a motion to approve the minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye. Opposed? Minutes are approved. We are on to new business. The first item is annexation and plan of service request, Shawn Collins, 9351 Rocky Fork Ammerville Road, annexation and R3 zoning.
Yes, this is a request to annex one parcel of land, totals about nine acres. There is a house on the property there at 9351. Proposed zoning is R3. Surrounding zoning is REM in Rutherford County. The future land use plan would support low-density residential west of Rocky Fork Ammerville Road and medium-density residential east of Rocky Fork Ammerville in this area. Major thoroughfare plan does designate Rocky Fork Ammerville Road as a minor arterial requiring 80 feet of right-of-way, so any development of this property would require the dedication of right-of-way of at least 40 feet from the center of the road. With this request, staff would recommend the annexation of the existing right-of-way of Rocky Fork Ammerville Road from the current town limits, kind of, which would be south and east of this parcel, from that point to kind of the northwesternmost corner of the track. It's a distance of approximately 1,640 feet. There was a couple of comments from CUD. Their existing infrastructure is not adequate to meet fire flow at this time, so they would have to be water line, water upgrades to be made prior to any development of this track. And from a plan of services standpoint, the CUD would be the water provider here, but all other services the town would be providing if this parcel is annexed. And that is all that I have.
Questions for Kevin?
CUD know any time frame on getting that? Is that the pumping station there at the creek?
No, I think this is maybe something else. I'm not 100% sure. They haven't indicated to us any timeline on any improvements there, on this specific location anyway.
Kevin, with staff's recommendation to annex the roadway, that would allow us to oversee any improvements that might be required for a site plan or what we may require track study-wise or anything if it were so warranted?
Exactly. And of course, we are in the very beginning stages of looking at those road for, that road for some improvements, and this would be part of that right-of-way that we would need to be looking at as well, so.
Yeah, I think that'd be prudent. Any other questions or discussion?
Crossing the property, the Kedron Church Road, isn't it supposed to be getting an improvement as well?
Kedron Church Road, yes. Well, that's part of the bank side development when they connect bank side drive to it, yes. That is part of their requirements.
Is that in the city now, or is that in the county now?
It's in the city.
Okay. So is the church the property line?
The church property is not in the town.
But it's the Kedron Church Road?
The road is.
Okay. So everything, the county comes up to the road line itself?
Right.
Other questions? Do I have a motion?
Chairman, show me it's not voting. It's seen.
I'll move for approval.
Have a motion to approve. From Tony, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now on to preliminary plats. It seems like we got there pretty quickly tonight. So our first item under preliminary plats is Gwyn Farms Phase 4, Robert Gwyn Drive, owner developer, Lennar Homes of Tennessee LLC.
Yeah, this is Phase 4 of Gwyn Farms. This is a part of the Gwyn Farms PRD. This is about 13.57 acres, it's 71 lots. We had a few comments. The first five would all need to remain. Those are all standard comments. We'd want to keep those. Comment number six regarding label the street names and submit the 911 approval. We have received that in digital form. The hard copy you all have in front of that does not have the street names on it, but we have received that, and they'd have, could do have the 911 approval as well digitally. They didn't, they weren't able to submit the paper copies. They had some issues with their blotter, so. And then comment number seven regarding Row D is still shown as Row D on your drawings there. We had some concerns about the slope as to how it was going to connect to that existing, the adjacent property and the ability for it to ever, to realistically be extended. They have made some modifications to that, and we're satisfied with the changes they've made there, so we can remove that comment as well. And we would need to keep comment number eight. We do still need to keep, get their roadway lighting plan submitted from Mill Tennessee Electric. And so with those six remaining comments, staff would recommend approval.
Kevin, this is consistent with what we've seen previously?
It's consistent with the approved PRD. Yes, sir.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve with staff comment.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments from Andrew. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Amy. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item under preliminary plats is Valley Green, Lot 56, 216, 218, 220, and 222 Terrytown Drive, owner developer Scott and Dennis Butler.
Yeah, this is a preliminary plat. This is for four lots, 2.2 acres. This is a part of the PRD that you all looked at quite extensively last month, and is actually up for second reading next week at the council. So any approval of this plat would be subject to that rezoning being approved. And that is, of course, was our comment number six there. Again, this is, it is the four lots, as we talked about last month. The setbacks are as we discussed last month, and lot widths are as we discussed. So this is consistent with the PRD as it was recommended by planning commission and as it was approved on first reading by the town council. So again, as I said, it does have, still has to be approved there one more time before this plaque, if you all do approve the plaque, it would have to be pending that change being approved Tuesday night. So the other comments we had are all relatively standard-type comments, so we would want to keep those as well. So we would recommend approval with the six comments that are shown in your packet.
So there have been no changes from what we saw and discussed. Well, there have been changes because we went from five to four.
Right.
I see that we do have the 15-foot side setbacks, which were important to be consistent with the neighborhood.
Right.
The issues as far as HOA and maintaining of the common open space, that's would be with the discussion and either approval or denial at the council. So that's something that we're not concerned with at this point, correct?
Yeah, these are all, there is, the common open space is shown, so this plat, you know, more definitively lays out what that open space will be, obviously with the lot boundaries being shown and everything. But all that is part of the PRD. If that is approved, Tuesday night, they'll certainly will go to this plat and any future development plans on it, on this property.
Okay. Other questions or comments as you guys have reviewing this? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Move to approve with staff comment.
Have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved. We're on to final plats. Kevin, the first one's been withdrawn on our agenda tonight?
That is correct.
So that takes us to number two, which is Derby Run Phase 1A, 1B, Rocky Fork Ammerville Road, owner developer M2 Group LLC and Charter Commercial LLC.
Yeah, this is the final plat for Derby Run, phases basically 1A and 1B. Little over 11 acres of land, 55 lots. This Derby Run PRD is on Rocky Fork Ammerville Road. We had several comments. Majority of these are, came from Consolidated Utility District, but we will go through these. Number one would need to remain, just as a standard comment. Number two, as we looked at earlier with the annexation, the major thoroughfare plan does designate this Rocky Fork Ammerville Road as a minor arterial requiring 80 feet of right-of-way. An adequate right-of-way is shown to be dedicated with this plat for this portion of that road frontage. We'll need to keep comment three regarding the signatures being added prior to recording. Comment number four can be removed. They have added that note to the plat. Comments five through 11 are all from Consolidated Utility District, so I'd want to keep those and let them review those. And then comment 12 is actually, I think it was a duplication inadvertently there, so it can be removed as well because it also is regarding the HVAC unit note, so we can take that one off as well. So basically one through three and five through 11, we need to remain, and with that, those comments, staff would recommend approval. It is consistent with the approved preliminary plat and the PRD as well, so.
Questions for Kevin on this? I guess, Kevin, we're seeing a lot of the CUD comments in this area. Have we had discussions to see how, you know, how things are progressing that way, or?
I don't know if Mike, Mike could speak to that. I haven't personally had any discussions recently with him. I know there was a pretty major upgrade. They took care of a lot of the issues on some of the developments. I think there's still some similar things that need to happen to really finish that off, I think, that may, with certainly the parcel that we just looked at for annexation, there's still a piece of that, so.
But there have been some upgrades that?
There certainly have been some upgrades made, yeah.
So we're heading in the right direction here?
Right.
Other questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve with staff comment.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments from Andrew. Do I have a second? Second. Second from Tony. I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we are now on to site plans. The first item under site plans is Front Street Side Company, 103 Wright Street, owner developer Jeremy Firth. Mitchell, you got this?
I do.
All right.
This is existing building, which is at 103 Wright Street. It is currently in pretty dilapidated condition, so the applicant is going to be planning on demolishing this building and rebuilding in its place. Property is located within the historic district and has received approval from the Historic Zoning Commission during the July 2021 meeting. The site does have access via Wright Street and is bordered by an alley to the rear of the building. The building would be utilized by the applicant for community involvement, hosting events, and a second floor with office space and additional printing space for his primary business on Front Street. The architectural elevations for this building show to be used primarily brick on all four sides. And then we have a couple of standard comments, all to remain, and then a couple of staff comments as well. Staff comment one is about the backflow preventer located outside of the building or in the ground. The applicant's currently working with utility department on that to solve that issue. And then comment two is about a third floor canopy. There was a canopy previously proposed for the top story of this structure, which there were some issues as far as the fire code is concerned, so the applicant has removed that cover on the top story of the building, and so that comment can be removed. So we're left with staff comment one, and then the standard comments, and with that, staff recommend approval.
Questions for Mitchell?
Not so much a question, just a comment. Jeremy has done a lot down on Front Street there to make his business look quite attractive, so I'm glad to see he's making more improvements, so.
Yeah, I think it's definitely going to add to the downtown area. I do like the elevations being the brick and kind of keeping in what we have down there, and it just looks like it's another, you know, potential event-type venue to bring people into the downtown area. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve with staff comment.
Have a motion to approve with staff comments from Amy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mark. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item under site plan is Ken Pilkerton Drive, 611 Ken Pilkerton Drive, owner developer Robert Posarella and Messine Altamini.
Yeah, so this is a proposed retail building, which would be 4,200 square foot in size, located on Ken Pilkerton Drive. Property is bound by Mill Springs Town Home Development over on the east side, and to the west is the Smyrna Village Shopping Center. In its current state, this property is vacant, and it would have one access point off of Ken Pilkerton Drive to serve it. Vehicle use area for the site is 7,840 square feet, which would require 784 square feet of landscaping. They're proposing for 1,103 square feet, so they're meeting that requirement. Parking required of 21 spaces, and they are showing for 21 as well. And there is one handicap space that would be required, and they are showing that as well. The landscape plan shows trees lining the eastern property line along the multifamily development. Street trees are also shown along Ken Pilkerton Drive with shrubs planted around the parking lot. Architecture elevations, submitted for the front elevations only for this building, look to be a brick-type material, and the materials percentages for the other three elevations of this building are, have not been submitted yet at this time. Have a couple of standard comments, all to remain, as well as staff comments. Comment one, we asked them to obtain sewer access easement from the property owner to the east and provide documentation prior to issuance of a building permit. The applicant stated they are working on this. Comment two, submit architectural elevations showing proposed materials and the percentage of each material for all four sides of the building, which must meet designer view. The applicant did state they have requested this from the architect at this time, but have not received it back in time for the meeting. Comment three asks to provide the handicap access from the building to the sidewalk along Ken Pilkerton Drive. They have done that, so we can remove comment three. Comment four asks to show the proposed fire hydrant on the southwest corner of the building. They have shown it, but they don't have it labeled. It's pretty tough to see, so I'd asked that they please label that fire hydrant as such. Comment five to show the material to be used on the dumpster enclosure details. They've added a note that says it's going to be matching the building, but we want them to call out specifically what material that elevation will be consisting of. Comment six, adequate parking is not shown for any future restaurants. This is more of a general knowledge type of a comment more than anything else, but the parking is just for a multiple tenant in a retail situation, so no restaurant will be allowed at any time in this, in the future for this development. Comment seven, parking is provided for one standalone user, not multiple users. They have corrected this comment by scaling down the building size, which thus reduced the overall parking requirement down. So comment seven can be eliminated. Comment eight, the backflow preventer shall be reduced pressure type, as utilities comment. May or may not have been addressed yet, but we will remain, let utilities address that. Comment nine, we asked them to show a 40-foot wide utility easement on either side of the overhead electrical lines. We have been in touch with Mill Tennessee Electric about this, so they have shown that easement on both sides of the utility pool, so the first part of that comment can be removed. Second part, we had about landscaping within that easement must meet Mill Tennessee Electric requirements, and there were trees shown within that easement that don't meet what Mill Tennessee requires as far as spacing away from the utility pools. So we'd like them to either, A, coordinate with Mill Tennessee Electric to get this correctly fixed, or breed up on Mill Tennessee's requirements, on the landscape requirements, and get it addressed. Comment 10, there was a little bit of a difference in the elevation between the sidewalk and the front of the building. That would, that's a codes comment. We'd like to leave that. And comment 11, staff is concerned about the loading zone, which was located previously when this, before this building was reduced on size, the loading zone had the truck pulling into the site and basically blocking a lot of the parking spots. So in reducing the site, they have adjusted the loading zone to be, when you pull into the site, basically eliminate half of the entrance to the site. You don't have an exit at that point. So staff still has major concern about that comment as well, about where that loading zone would be. If the loading truck didn't want to pull into the site, they would be left on Ken Pilkerton Drive, and we don't want unloading and loading to be done on the main road. So comment 11 is our biggest concern we have on this. There was an additional comment was found today. The vehicle use area, square footage on the cover page is just different from what's shown on the landscape plan, so we want consistency between those numbers as well. So with that, staff would recommend denial just due to the major concern we have as far as the configuration of the site and where that loading and unloading zone is at for the site. And that's all I got.
Questions for Mitch?
Not a question, but I'm glad to hear recommend, make a recommendation based on the loading and unloading, as well as typically when we get these, we have all four sides in design review to look at, and we don't have that here. So I know it has to meet design review. That leaves it up on staff. We really don't get to take a peek at it at this, here. I think we need that.
Well, and I agree with you because we just went through.
An EFS change.
An EFS change and percentages as far as materials and accents, as far as what was allowed and percentages thereof, and it's something that I think we'd be amiss if we just said we didn't want to take a look at it. So I'm in agreement with you. And I am very much concerned about loading and unloading. I know there are certain parts of town where, you know, if you go back and you look, and probably wasn't thought of, or there maybe wasn't a need to address it in the past, and we do have instances of vehicles, particularly tractor-trailers, parking on the road, and it creates, creates all sorts of hazard issues.
It would there especially, coming off of that roundabout situation.
Do I have a motion?
Based on staff recommendation, I would move to deny this request.
I have a motion to deny. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and second to deny this request. Any further discussion? All those in favor of denying this request signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is denied. Our next item is Lakeside Phase 2, Lot 21, 207 Emily Court Apartment A through E, owner developer Glaze Apartments LLC.
This is, this Lot 21 is located within Lakeside Development. It sits on about .35 acres, located at 207 Emily Court. Proposed development is for a five-plex, which is multifamily residential units. Property bound to the north and south by other town home units, to the west by apartments, and to the east by Emily Court. Surrounding zoning consists of R4 and R6, and as proposed, the site would have one access point onto Emily Court. Vehicle use area for the site, 4,693 square feet, which would require 469 square feet of landscaping. Applicants proposing for over 500, they're meeting that requirement. Parking required of 10 spaces, and they are showing for 10 as well. Landscape plan shows shrubs between the parking lot and roadway and two trees, which are located on either side of the parking lot, drive aisle. Architecture elevations show all four sides of the buildings to be built utilizing brick. And we have a couple of standard comments, all to remain, as well as two staff comments. Staff comment one, we asked them to make the parking space dimension label bigger so we could read it. That has been addressed. And comment two, to provide room elevations of the next upstream sewer manhole, and they have done that as well. So both staff comments can be removed, and we're just left with the standard comments. With that, we would recommend approval.
Mitchell, this is consistent with surrounding zoning.
Yeah, it fits, and there is a very similar unit that was done a couple years ago, or three or four years ago at the end, at the cul-de-sac at the end of this.
It looks like we're adding a lot that was undeveloped here.
Yeah, correct.
Okay. Questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve with staff comments.
Have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mike. Have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Further discussion or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item under site plan is Lowry Street, I'm sorry, Lowry Station, 657 to 683 South Lowry Street. Lowry Street, and 678 and 690 Charizard Way. Owner developer, Robert Latimer.
Yeah, this is Lowry Station, which y'all have seen a couple times before now, so it recently expired, and the applicant's back to renew their year-long for-site-plan approval again. Just brief background on this, Lowry Station, located on South Lowry Street between Stewart Drive and Southside Drive. Planned residential development for twenty-one townhomes on one point four or five acres. Private street would serve these units, provide access to both Stewart Drive and Southside Drive. Surrounding zoning consists of PRD, which is the Southside Planned Development, and C2, some of which is being used as a residential use directly behind off Stewart Drive. All that is owned commercial, but being used for residential purpose. Property is located within the Lowry Street overlay in the mixed-use corridor district. Vehicle use area, seventeen thousand four fifty-nine square feet, which would require one thousand seven hundred and forty-six square feet of landscaping, and they're proposing for five thousand six forty, meeting that requirement. And total parking required of forty-two spaces, which is two per unit, and they are showing for sixty-one. Landscape plan shows variety of shrubs planted along Lowry Street in front of the units and along both road fringes, Stewart Drive and Southside Drive. Trees are proposed to be planted throughout the interior of the site and along Southside Drive as well. The architecture elevations for both buildings show primary building material of brick with brick corbeled bands and accent brick designs to provide character to these buildings' fronts. Two metal awnings designs are proposed, one over each front door alternating between each unit. And the rears of the units have fiber cement siding as the primary material. The three-story townhomes will have patio off the second story with a picket screen to go around it as well. Standard comments, all to remain, and then staff comments, we had a couple of them. Staff comment one, page C6.00, to provide rim elevations. That's more of a code utilities comment. And then comment two, all homes required to have sewer backwater valves, and that's providing, or complying with the International Residential Code. Add an additional comment to make the vehicle use area square footage consistent on all the pages. There was a little bit of inconsistency between the pages. Add another comment that sixty-one parking spaces were shown on the site. The plans show there's sixty-three, so just make that consistent with what the plans show as well. So this overall is consistent with what the approved PRD shows and what we've seen in the past. It's a, it's a mirror image, basically brought back the same plan to be approved again. So with that, staff would recommend approval with those comments.
Yeah, as I recall, since this was a PRD, we had fairly extensive discussion, both at the planning level and at the council level, not only with the overall site, but particularly with the elevations. So you were, we are saying that there's been no change in that whatsoever, right? I know some of you guys may not have been here when this went through the first times, and if you have any questions, please feel free to ask them.
Was there an additional easement on the front of it for a sewer line or drainage or something, Mitchell? You remember that?
Yeah, I believe there are utilities.
Does it still apply to this since it?
Yeah. I remember it went, then it went through last time. There was a lot of discussion about the easements around.
Something about the, the offset of the property in the front.
The building fronts?
Yes.
I remember.
There was a sewer line, pretty quick, sewer water, and then running or anything as a matter of fact.
Accommodate, it wasn't shown on the original request, but yeah, this, this is consistent with what's required on that.
We talked about those corbeled bands and all that architectural trim too that was in the design. I think Mr. Cole at the time was adamant that we leave those in there, and that was a good call, so.
Yeah, I think the other part of the discussion was the Lowry Street overlay and, and making sure that just from the aesthetics, you know, from the elevations, that it was going to be consistent with what we wanted to do with Lowry Street as we continue to expand that
Any other questions or discussion? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve, staff comment.
I have a motion to approve for staff comments, so I have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry?
I won't leave you hanging.
Thank you. That gets us to a vote. All those in favor of approving this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion carries. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Tony. We are now on to South Park Phase Two, 2020, 250, 2080, Midway Lane. Owner developer, Prologis LP.
Yeah, this is what y'all recently saw a couple months ago come through for annexation and rezoning, property along I-24 and Olmville interchange. They're proposing for three warehouses, all to be built within one phase for this, which is about eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand two hundred square feet worth of warehouse. All three buildings proposed to be constructed in one phase. Property was annexed and rezoned by the council from I-2 and C2 to PID during the August 2021 meeting. Olive branch flows through the south side of this property, resulting in floodway and floodplain, which are both present on this property. Additionally, there's an area approximately just shy of seven acres north of the surrounding, surrounded parcel at eighteen fifty-two Olmville that is within the hundred-year floodplain. There will be one access point to this development, which is off of Midway Lane, and serves the existing industrial developments to the south of this property. Vehicle use area, sixteen point two-four acres, which would require thirty-five thousand three hundred and seventy-five square feet of landscaping. They're proposing for over an acre, one point three-four acres, meeting that requirement. Parking required of three hundred and seventy spaces, and they are showing for eight hundred and sixteen, which would require seventeen handicap parking spaces, and they are showing seventeen as well, meeting that requirement. Landscape plan shows trees planted within landscape islands around the parking lots and shrubs as well. Type D landscape buffer is proposed around the residential lots, which do front Olive Branch Road near the northwest side of the property. There is an existing home in the southeastern part of the development, which did remain through this whole annexation process. They want it to be left as is, so you do have that house that is just south of this development that is remaining. We did ask them to leave a little bit of landscaping there, and they're also providing additional evergreens in that area to provide an additional buffer for that homeowner as Architecture elevations show primary material of concrete tilt panel on all sides of the buildings. Previously mentioned, the olive branch does flow through the southern portion of this property, and there is a part of the property within the floodway. However, it is not proposed to be developed upon. There is another area, just under seven acres along twenty-four, I-24, that is part of the hundred-year floodplain, and will result in the development elevated a foot above the flood elevation that is located within the hundred-year floodplain. That only pertains to the portion of the building that is built, being built within that hundred-year floodplain. Couple standard comments, all to remain, and we had a couple staff comments as well. Staff comment one, the proposed sewer main along Olive Branch will not be available until June 2022. That's more of a informational comment than anything else. Comment two, the field verified manhole inverters at the connection points, and that kind of goes along with comment one as well, more informational and to be done at layer time. Comment three, the construction entrance stone size, we asked them to adjust that to two to four inches, and they have done so. Comment three can be removed. Comment four, to provide an auto turn apparatus movement throughout the site, and there was a portion of the site nearby the Building Seven, I believe it is, on the eastern side of it, that isn't to fire department's specifications, what they'd like to see, so they'd like a dedicated hammerhead in that area near the detention pond. Comment five, to change the building numbers to seven, eight, nine. They were one, two, three, which coincided with the existing Southside Development, so they have adjusted those numbers to seven, eight, nine. Comment five can be removed. Comment six, to submit construction plans for the bridge which would cross Olive Branch. The applicant has stated that that is in progress at this time. Comment seven, to provide documentation on the ingress egress easements from the site through the existing South Park Development to the public rightway. So you have Midway Lane, which comes off of Olmville, and then after you come off Midway from Olmville, it turns into private. The, they have shown act, a access easement going to that private drive and at the main development. We'd like them to continue that access easement all the way up until you get to the public rightway, which would be Midway Lane. So they've gotten halfway there, just not an entire way. Comment eight, the existing property lines will have to be eliminated via combining the tracks together prior to issuance of a building permit, being this is multiple parcels. We want them to combine them before getting a permit. Comment nine, proposed seventeen handicap parking spaces are required. They have shown those, so comment nine can be reduced, eliminated. Comments ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen are all CUD and will remain. So with that, we have gotten rid of comments three, five, and nine, and with that, staff would recommend approval with those comments.
So I recall, this is one that we had quite a bit of discussion at, at both the planning commission and council level on this.
Correct. It's a, it's a mirror image of what they came through for the rezoning.
Questions or comments?
Mitch, I thought I heard you say it was a type D buffer.
Correct.
That's our, that's our heaviest, right?
Heaviest buffer, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's important, and also that, that Olive Branch won't be extended through there, so there won't be a mix of residential and, and industrial, commercial traffic.
Correct. That was a big topic of discussion the other time.
Any other questions or comments? Do I have a motion? A motion to approve with staff comments. Tony, second from Mark. Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The motion carries. Our next item is Swanson Development LP, 231 and 261 Mayfield Drive. Owner developer, Swanson Development LP.
Yeah, Swanson Development, which is, they do have an existing building on Mayfield Drive across from the post office. There is area in the back of the property that has not been developed yet, so at this time, they are requesting to build two additional buildings, which each would be about fifty-one thousand six hundred square feet. Well, it's, like I said, the rear half of the property is currently undeveloped, and it borders Lancaster Christian Academy, which is on the west side. Single-family homes are on the north, and the Smyrna Housing Authority does have property on the east side of this development as well. As part of this development, access points onto Mayfield Drive would be reconfigured for four ingress egress points along for more efficient flow throughout the site and onto Mayfield Drive. Currently, as it stands, there's a, there's a lot of large openings onto Mayfield, so this would clean it up, make it look a lot nicer. Vehicle use area, three point nine-four acres, which require thirteen thousand seven fifty-three square feet of landscaping. They are proposing for thirty-five thousand eight hundred and twenty square feet. Parking required of two hundred and four spaces, and they are showing for two hundred and seventy-one. And there are five handicap parking spaces required as part of that, and they are showing for seven. Landscape plan shows, once again, a type D buffer boarding the properties on the rear half of the property, the north, east, and west, which do kind of surround where these new buildings would be located. Variety of trees are proposed to be planted along the remaining property lines, as well as in landscape islands. Streetscaping is also proposed to be added and would include street trees and shrubs. Architecture elevations show a mix of brick and metal. The existing building that fronts Mayfield Drive that is there right now is entirely brick on the front elevations. The sides and rear of the building do consist of concrete block. Standard comments, all to remain, as well as staff comments. Staff comment one, we asked them to provide a auto turn throughout the site for the fire department. They have asked at this time that they rework it. There are some areas of the site that they didn't like entirely, so they'll either A, get with the fire department to have that site reconfigured in those areas, or get with staff, and we'll, we'll figure it out. Comment two, any landscaping underneath electrical lines must meet Mill Tennessee Electric plant requirements, as they say similar comments to the one we had earlier about planting underneath the easement, and the applicant stated that they are working with Mill Tennessee Electric on this. Comment three, to provide sewer manhole elevations. Comment four, to show the type of construction on the buildings. They have done so. Comment five, the buildings require, are required to be sprinkled, must have a dedicated fire line, FDC, and sprinkler connection for each building, and they have shown that, so that can be removed. Comment six, the existing building canopy at the rear of the building, so at the rear of this building in the middle, there was, there's an existing structure. Half of that building will be demoed, half of it will remain, so that's what that comment was about and can be removed. Comment seven, based on the provided spaces, five handicap spaces would be required, and they weren't showing that before, but they are showing it now. That could be removed. Comment eight, to provide rim elevations for sewer manholes three and four. I will leave that comment. And comment nine was regarding the elevations. The submitted architecture elevations are brick and metal on the front and all metal on the sides and rear. The existing building on the side is primarily brick on the front, a standard concrete block on the sides and rear of it. Staff would recommend that the metal shown on the architecture elevations for the new buildings be required to be insulated metal panels, shown in the photo submitted to staff previously la, last week. Staff would also recommend that the amount of brick shown on the front elevations be increased to match the height of the front wall of the existing building. So this is, so if you're looking at the building from Mayfield, you look back at the existing building, you see brick. You look further back, you see the new buildings, you still see brick up to that same level. Just trying to have consistency there. So the applicant has shown the IMP panel, metal panels and brick, which would match the height of the existing buildings, so they essentially have addressed our comment for that. On your, on the screen right now, these are part of the metal that has, was submitted to staff previously, so you kind of have a mix of that brick and the metal panels. So with that, on all, staff comments four, five, six, seven, and nine can be taken off. We're left with one, two, three, and eight. And with that, staff would recommend approval.
And this is just, we got a couple pictures. They sent us, this is a building, they're building in Murphysboro that's using this material, so they want, this is just a sample of what that is. It's kind of, it's the gray, the two, kind of the two shades of gray that are in this picture, but that's what they're requesting, which to be allowed to, to use on this building.
That's the sides and the back?
That's the sides and the back and the top portion of the fronts. It actually has, it's an insulated product, and it actually almost has kind of a stucco or EFS-type look to it, even though it is a metal.
The current building now, it's all brick all the way to the top?
On the front, it is, yes.
And it blends in on the sides with a block?
It's concrete block on the side and back, yeah.
So with this and what staff's recommended, we, we do meet design review here.
Yeah, this is an industrial district.
Yeah.
So, and our, our main focus was the, the front of the building is just to kind of match the existing building as best you can. Even that's a, that's older, obviously an older building, this would be brand-new, so it's not going to match exactly, obviously, but at least have some consistency in the materials. They had less brick and more metal on the front when they originally submitted them to us, and that's why we had made that recommendation. And the elevations they had submitted, also, if you look strictly at the elevations, it looks more like what the older version of the metal panel, that's what we would look at on an older metal building or something. That's what it looks like on the, just the architectural drawings that we were submitted, but this, that wasn't their intent to, this is the material they're actually wanting to use. So it's a better look to it than what you would expect.
Which is represented here.
Right.
Comments or questions?
Visibility on this building is, you're going to be able to see pretty much all four sides, three anyways, with the, two that face each other where the trucks are. Subvision behind it, once you take trees out, it's going to really open that view up to the neighbors behind it. And of course, from Mayfield definitely, and then on both of the sides where you have Lancaster, and then you have the, the other homes there on the right-hand side of that So it definitely would look better to be the panels on it, because once they, there's a lot of. a lot of old growth, trees, shrubs, things like that back there, once it's cleaned up, it's really going to open that view up all the way to the back of the property.
And they've actually have already done some of that already. This, we, of course, they would have to go back with the, the type D type buffer, which is the berm and the trees on top, so they'll have to go back with our most restrictive buffer on the back, and both sides coming back, at least where they're going to be building. And so, and they're going to add some landscaping all the way to the street and along the street as well, and all that as well, that's not there now.
Then the right, the right-hand side of that property has your main power lines running up it, back to that back part of that property on the back right corner, too.
Right.
They'll have to stay out of it as well, right?
Yeah, they'll have to work, work through Milton, with Milton Tennessee Electric on that, yeah.
Who to approve with staff comments?
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, so I have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second, thank you, Andrew. To approve with staff comments, further discussion or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Our next item under site plans is Take Five Oil Change, four fifty-one Cheney Road. Owner, developer, John Lee L L C and Kinlan Development.
This is a site plan for Take Five Oil Change, proposing a one thousand five hundred and twenty-one square foot facility on lot four A of the Lee Bowman subdivision, which is located on the corner of Cheney Road and then Private Road throughout that, serve those our lots within the Lee Bowman subdivision. Property is rezoned by council from C two to P C D during the October twenty twenty-one meeting, and the proposed site layout would allow for stacking of approximately fourteen vehicles. In its current state, property is vacant, and one access point would be proposed off of the private road. Vehicle use area throughout the site, twelve thousand five hundred square feet, which would require one thousand two hundred and fifty square feet of landscaping. They are showing for fourteen fifty-eight square feet, meaning that requirement. Parking required of four spaces, and they are showing for five with one handicap space. Landscape plan shows two street trees planted at the entrance off the private drive, as well as spread around the building in landscaped islands. Shrubs are proposed along the private drive fronting chain, along the road, fronting Cheney Road. There is an Enbridge utility easement, which does prevent streetscaping on the western half of this property, and due to this, the designer review manual requirement of street tree space every forty feet will not be met. We had a similar issue with the Marriott Hotel, went on the corner of Potomac and Cheney as well, there was a, that utility easement went right through the eastern half of the property, so a similar situation where they couldn't plant trees on that side of the property. Architecture elevations show the building to be finished entirely of primer materials consisting of stacked stone, brick, and glass and glazing. O earnings are proposed over several windows as well, and this is consistent with the proposed P C D that was approved. Standard comments, one through five, all to remain, and a couple staff comments as well. Staff comment one, we asked them to show a fifteen hundred gallon gr, oil-water separator, and apparently the applicant is working with utilities on this to potentially make it down to five hundred gallons, so that is a utilities comment, we'll leave that remain, as well as comment two, to show a sewer backwater valve, and we're going to leave that to utilities to review and see if it is acceptable by their standards. So with that, those two staff comments will remain, and we recommend approval. It is consistent in all ways with the approved P C D.
And we are still good that we're, we're where we need to be with the stacking perspective as far as the fourteen vehicles, correct?
Yeah, so you have three bays, I believe, at this site, and you have stacking for two or three lanes behind the bays even, so you can have all those bays filled, and you have vehicles stacking in behind those as well, so, yeah, staff feels comfortable with it. It's, the entrance is positioned as far east on the site as they can get it, so this is, this works for us.
Yeah, I think this was a big lesson learned over the years, as, as we've grown as a town, to make sure that when we have businesses that pull traffic in, we make sure that we have enough stacking to get it off the road and onto the property itself.
Mitchell on the oil-water separator?
Yes.
Is there a formula to get to the fifteen hundred versus the five hundred, and how would they get a thousand?
That, I'm not sure on. They made a comment they're working with Mark Parker and the utilities department on this, that's, that's his ball field to play on. I don't know what he deems five hundred versus fifteen hundred, I think fifteen hundred is more of a standard, so I don't know if it's a smaller operation gets a smaller oil-water separator, but...
I didn't know if there's a formula they use for the, each bay would have so many...
Yeah, that one, I don't know, can't really address that.
Yeah. So if it's approved, it's approved at fifteen hundred?
Yeah, whatever they're working through utilities with is what they'll go with.
Yeah, we could, we could probably add a little, at the end of the, you know, utilities department to review to determine the needed size or something like that, yeah.
I don't know if fifteen hundred was standard, and, you know, I, I didn't know, like I said, if there was a formula they used to get to the separator or not, so...
We can add that so that it's not a requirement of your approval, that they'd be a fifteen hundred gallon, we don't want to, if, if they don't need it, we don't want it to be a requirement.
Because as it sits, if we approve it, that's what they have to do, right?
Right.
So a motion would include a change of the comment to require a
Review.
Review of the gallon oil-water separated, separator that would be approved by the city, the town?
By town staff, right.
But, okay, you good with that, Mike?
Yes.
Other questions or comments? Do I have a, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Just for a little clarity, in the stacking, it doesn't matter if there are fourteen in a line, or fourteen, three, it's just, as long as on the property, you have the fourteen cars, is that correct?
That's the, yes, that's the plan of it, yes, as long as you have fourteen that are stacked in the site.
In the site.
Yes.
How they do it does not necessarily matter.
Yeah, and they'll be three wide once you get around
Right.
There, you could probably do nine, eight or nine pretty easily there, and then you just come down the driveway, then back to the road, so...
Do I have a motion?
Question's approved.
Uh, do you want to?
With the addition of the town approving a smaller separator if needed.
We got it.
We good?
Yeah.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Looks like we're at our last item under site plans, Villagewood Townhomes, Country Village Drive. Owner, developer, Infinity Home Builders, Scott and Dennis Button.
This is a multi-family residential development, which was previously approved for a P R D zoning, backed by town council back in two thousand and six. Proposed development does consist of seventy-five units spread across thirteen point six three acres. There are several topographical features on this property, which do appear to resemble sinkholes, and these are planned to be developed around. Two access points are shown for this development, one on Country Village Drive and one off of Wildwood Drive. Vehicle use area for this site, two point five acres, and there's, which would require landscaping of ten thousand nine hundred and fifteen square feet. Applicants proposing for three point three five acres worth of landscaping. Total parking, one hundred and fifty spaces required, which is two per unit, and they are showing for one hundred and seventy-six, which would allow for additional twenty-six spaces for visitor and guest parking as well. And being it is a townhome development, there are no handicap parking requirements, so none are shown for the site. Landscape plan shows a type A landscape buffer along the property line bordering the single-family properties. Shrubs are shown in front of each unit, as well as trees planted within landscape islands throughout the parking lot. Architecture elevations show the front elevations to be built utilizing a minimum of sixty percent brick-stone mixture, with the sides and rear to be vinyl. The proposed elevations are approved, are consistent with the approved P R D back in two thousand and six, so obviously, this doesn't mean what we've previously required for multi-family developments, but being this was approved back in two thousand and six, we're limited on as far as what we can make them do, so they, they've done as much as they can, staying consistent with what was approved back in two thousand and six with the brick and vinyl mixture. Standard comments, one through five, all to remain, and staff comment one, we asked them to provide easements for all the public water and sewer mains, they have done so. Comment two, we asked them to provide a street name in front of units one one oh one through one one oh six, and they have done that, but they still need to provide the N, nine one one approval for the street names throughout the site. Comment three, ask them to, if proposing drainage into a sinkhole, this is something that will be after re, reviewed by T deck and shown in the drainage calculations. Comment four, there are multiple sinkholes on this property, and appears that one of the buildings is proposed to be built on top of a sinkhole, so we asked them to provide geotechnical engineering drawings for the building foundations, that will be reviewed by the codes and Public Works Department as well. Five, the dumpster enclosure required to be finished with brick or stone to match the building elevations. The applicant has labeled it as matching the building facade, so we'd just like them to call out exactly what that material is going to be used on the dumpster elevations. Comment six, we asked them to provide a firetruck turnaround near unit one one zero six. Previously, it was a dead end, they needed a turnaround of sorts, the applicant has revised these drawings to make it connect to the main access point off of Country Village Drive. So being they have done so, we'd like them to submit a auto turn for, make sure that firetruck can maneuver throughout the site if needed. Comment seven, asked to provide the construction entrance to have two to four inch rock diameter and be eight inch thick, they have added the eight inch thick portion, they have not done the two to four inch portion, so half that comment will have to remain. Comment eight, to revise the landscape area provided to show the landscaping to be installed and the existing trees remaining as a separate number, so it is a large landscape provided number of three point five acres, I believe. A lot of that is with existing vegetation, which will remain, and there is new vegetation, which is proposed, we asked them to separate those two numbers out, so we can get a good idea of what's remaining and what's being proposed at the site. Comment nine, to add a sidewalk along Country Village Drive, they have done so. And comment ten, the site data table showed twenty handicap parking spaces, but none were shown on the site, and the applicant has removed that from the site data table. So staff comments one, nine, and ten can be removed, and then we have a couple revisions to number two, so we, they have addressed the street name portion of it, but have not provided that one approval. And then comment seven, they've addressed the eight inch thick, but not the two to four inch rock diameter, so with that, staff recommend approval with those comments.
Once a P R D is approved, is there, there's no expiration on it, correct?
That's correct. I mean, it's, it's, it's the same as if you rezoned it to R three, or C two, or whatever district like that.
So what was required as far as, you know, even down to elevations and, and things like that, they would, obviously today, it would, it would be a lot different in which we would probably see bricks sewn, cement fiber board on a development like this.
Yeah, that's true. We probably would, it would be different today, but it is, as this one was approved, it actually had the site plan approved, I believe, at that time, or not long after it was zoned, and it just, it was never developed, for whatever reason. There's a few things that are here now that I don't think were there before, like the, the post office requirements of a mail kiosk, they've got that shown now, whereas it wasn't before, and things like that, but for the most part, this is pretty consistent with what was approved in that P R D back in two thousand and six.
So this is fifteen years, and a lot's changed in fifteen years.
Yeah.
So I know we're a little handcuffed on what we approved as a P R D back in two thousand and six, but Enick here, I would almost beg him to take that vinyl and turn it into cement fiber, if that's possible, and I guess we're with our hand out here, but can you address that for us, Enick?
I can. I'm Enick Gerald with Hudson Steel. I, I have discussed that with Scott and Dennis, they, they did not want to do that. The, the houses surrounding in Kayla Village are all vinyl. From a site distance standpoint, driving down Country Village or Wildwood, these units are set back about a hundred and fifty feet, you're not going to see them driving down the roads.
I understand.
Internal, you will. He, he said he would go with a luxury vinyl, which I don't know
That doesn't appease me at all.
But he, he wanted to leave it as vinyl, and a lot of these units, they'll be built up three or four feet, so they will have a brick, three to four feet to grade. There'll be a couple steps in, into them, but he wanted to keep the vinyl as approved originally.
You know, we've changed since two thousand and six.
I do, I know. And I asked Scott that very question. Couldn't be here tonight, but he, he wanted to leave it as was approved in the, in the PUD in two thousand and six, he wanted to leave it like it was approved.
Kevin, question for you, or maybe this is for Jeff Peach. Is this mandated by, by law? I mean, do we have to continue to let a P R D that was approved in two thousand and six remain, or is there something we can do from an ordinance perspective, or to change that? In other words, having an approval that is fourteen years old, fifteen years old? I don't know the answer to that, I'm asking somebody that might.
The, the zoning aspect of it, obviously, would remain. I would need to actually probably dig a little deeper on, on some of the
It's rare that anything like this old comes back, but I, I'd like to have something in place that gives us a little oversight from something that's that old. Because a lot's changed in our design review since then, and it's, 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 it's creating heartburn for me, Enick, I'll just tell you.
Yeah, you know, when we looked at, and again, I realize it's something we've done lately, it's not just an aesthetic standpoint. When we looked at the, and P R Ds where we had reduced side setbacks, and we went to a cement fiber board, it, there was a safety aspect of it, too.
And there still is.
And there still is, as far as, you know, vinyl's going to burn a lot faster than cement fiber board. So, I mean, it is disappointing to hear that he wants to stay with vinyl, but, you know...
In, in these units, there is a thirty-foot setback around the perimeter, and there's thirty-foot setback building to building.
Yeah, well, I mean, even if something happened within the building and...
I, I don't disagree, but there is further setbacks, and a lot of the PUDs come in today, and from a density standpoint, we're at five and a half units to the acre. You know, this site's got some challenges with the shape and some, some depressions that we're working around, but, but a lot of the sites today, when townhomes come in, ten, eleven units to the acre, so it's only about half of the number of units that, that would be on a lot of the sites today, so...
It's also got a lot of sinkholes you're having to worry about.
It, it does, and we actually could, could fill all of those, we've tried just to leave them, there's seven sinkholes, and there's one large one that is fenced today. If you ever walked down there now, Tony, but off of Wildwood, that thing's forty-foot deep, you walk in and out.
Yeah.
Been in and out several times myself.
I remember that one specifically, because I was on the council when this was approved originally, and that, the whole sinkhole thing, and specifically that one, created quite enough war with the community and the neighbors out there. They didn't like this development at all.
Well, it, it's fenced, and, and like I say, there's a lot of sinkholes that, that runs through town, that, that these falls on, this town has a study done by Albert Ogden with M T S U, looking at that. That sinkhole actually is large enough that it'll handle the hundred-year storm from this site without overflowing, it will not overtop in a hundred-year storm, it, it fills up, but it does not overtop into the neighbors. But, I mean, it's fenced today, the gate's not locked, you can go with a gatewalk down in there, I mean, you walk in and out, it's not like you're going to fall in, and, and there's a large tree, so these, these sinkholes that are out there are not sinking, it's not like Florida sand where it falls in, and there's large trees everywhere in there, so, eh, eh, those depressions, we're going to leave, we're going to just leave the trees and, and clean them up and leave them like they are. So it's going to be a nice walkable, a lot of trees, a lot of perimeter trees, there's a power line on one side, that there's, trees have been cleared, but we're leaving a lot of units, you're leaving a lot of tree rows there, too, so it, it's going to be a nice community inside, I understand the rules have changed on vinyl, but they, they wanted to stay per the approved PUD.
Well, the other thing with... Well, the other thing, I'd like to get away from, well, it's surrounded by this, so therefore, we're, we're just going to do this. You know, because it almost comes across with, you know, you've got something that may not look at ni- as nice, so let's build something that doesn't look as nice or put something that looks.
We're just consistent with the surroundings. You know, we're, we're, we are coming in and, and doing a landscape buffer around a lot of the perimeter. The original PUD really discussed a lot of landscaping, quite frankly, but we're adding more landscaping that was original. And into the east side is, what is that, Laurelwood Apartments, you know, but right up to it on, on the, on the east side of it. It's property that's been sitting there a long time. You know, Scott and Dennis' dad had it for years, didn't do anything with it. They've inherited, want to develop it, clean it up and, and move forward with it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is this going to be rental or sale?
All the units will be managed by.
A management company?
A third-party, and they will be for sale. There'll be a homeowner association to manage all the common area. And there'll be a horizontal property regime, so all the units are for sale, no rentals.
Okay, so there's seven sinkholes on it, eight including the big one.
Uh, I think seven including the big one, but yeah.
And there's a cup, a cup, are there some of the complexes is going to be built either close or on top of some of the sinkholes?
They'll be around, these holes are two or three foot deep. It's not like they're a big, big huge sinkhole, big as this room, couple feet deep, a little depression. You walk through the property, you wouldn't really notice the sinkhole.
I've drove around it, but you can't see through it because it's thick.
You can't see, it's thick, but you walking through the property, it's not like you're following a sinkhole. There are depressions that are just, you, big as this room, you go down a couple feet and back out. And we're, we're adding, you know, drainage structures at that. That's the reason the buildings will be built at three or four feet. Leaving those areas where draining water, you know, water drains into them. We've got some water coming from our site. We've got storm structures to pick that water up and carry it over. And it will discharge into a water quality basin. You know, we got new rules on stormwater before it goes into the big sinkhole. But it, it does drink in that big sinkhole. It, it will handle the hundred-year storm without overflowing. If it ever did overflow, it, there's a pipe that goes under Wildwood, through Kayla Village, through some of the other ones over to that drain. It's near Valley Drive, but I don't think, I don't think it's ever overtopped. I was over there in ninety-five. We had some big rains in May nine and fourteen to ninety-five, some of the biggest rains we've had here. It didn't fill up then, wasn't close. There was a lot of water coming through that, tearing down the area at a time. Didn't get any houses, just threw some, filled up the ditch, but it didn't fill up then.
Have they had any studies or anything done on the property, those depressions? Right now, you've got soil there and you start disturbing that and adding runoff, where you're having a lot more water runoff in there. Could one of those open up? Do they know what's underneath it?
Uh, they have not. What'll happen on the, one of the buildings is going to have, it's a depression that'll be built over. It'd be similar like Lakeside subdivision out there. Half those houses built on, and these sinkholes are not Florida that fall in, they're depression. They got big trees in them, you know, those sinkholes all over town. But, but building can, will be built and they'll have a chip. Well, they'll have a geotechnical engineer dig down to, to the rock, try to find if there is a solution channel or not. Used to, when you filled sinkholes, you sort of choked it off of concrete to stop the water. Now, you've got big rock to allow water to still continue to go through the can. But, but we'll have a geotechnical engineer on that building, manage the foundation, design the foundations and build them, you know. And, and these will be built up a few feet, just so that we're up above the sinkhole, so that we don't have any water into our buildings. And that's the reason we'll have that brick foundation around them, three, four feet all the way around.
I would be more worried about collapse later on down the road with water running into it. As you get more wa- wa- water running off into them or around them, form to a road on out quicker. Because you've got soil there now that's absorbing it. That's happened a couple of times here in town over the last twenty years where they built close on one or on one and property owners were stuck with a bill. Contractor was gone and they had to repair themselves.
Lots of sinkholes in town, I mean, I've.
So, if it's going to be for sale, the people are buying them, even though you've got a management company. Let's just say the worst-case scenario, you get part of a building that collapses. Who's responsible for that?
Yeah. It'll be noted on the plat before they buy a unit, they'll know if, you know, there's a lot of housing in Lakeside just like this and I don't know, we're not aware of any issues there. I'm not sure what you're talking about, but I know a lot of houses in this town that were built on around sinkholes that had any issues, you know, myself, so. I feel, I feel pretty confident about that. We'll, we'll have a geotechnical engineer that specializes in that design those.
And they're going to put a new fence up around the existing.
It, it's a nice fence. We'll, we're going to leave the fence. We'll, we'll fix the gate, but it's, it's eight foot tall chain link and it's a solid fence. It's a nice fence.
I could see part of it, I just wasn't sure what it was.
You can just open the gate and walk right in if you'd like, I mean. But there's not, used to, the years ago, when I worked for the town, the kids would build forts when they were building houses around there, get all the materials and build forts and play down in there. But it's, it's not like that anymore. There's not a lot of trash in it and you don't see much traffic in and out of it. I mean, I was in there all months ago and it's, it's, you can walk right in and walk out. It's forty foot deep, it's, it's a big hole, but you can walk in and out. Thank you.
Kevin, did you find out anything?
I mean, well, like we've, we've, yeah, I mean, we were, as far as a, I think it's going to take a little bit more time than what we can give you tonight as far as. An answer there, one definitive answer, I guess.
So, you're talking about as far as moving forward in general?
Right, yeah. For a PRD or any type of PUD that has an approval that has not developed, is there something we can do to?
Whether those materials are vested is the question.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Whether those materials are vested as part of that PRD is the question. And for me to be confident in my answer, I would, I would want to have more time to give to you.
How much time would you need for that?
I would prefer the next meeting, but.
Okay.
I don't mind, you know, deferring for a meeting to give Mr. Peach time. I'm pretty confident that since the materials were approved before, they go with the zoning, we'll let him research that. But if y'all feel more comfortable with deferring for a month, I won't be here next month. I've seen Scott having knee surgery, but I'll, I consent him.
You think we'd have any more success talking Scott in this cement fiber than you?
I'll ask him again. I'll give you his phone number. He'd be glad for you to call him, too. I'd call you.
Yeah, I've, I've talked to Scott. And so, I, you know, we just had something come in from him last month that we worked with him on.
Yeah.
As a matter of fact, it was on our agenda tonight. So, I'm asking him kind of maybe to work with us now, so.
I'll let him know.
Yeah.
But i- if, if you feel better about it, delay him time. I, I don't mind, I, I hate, I don't want to force you into something that, you know, I'd like for you to know the answer.
Oh, you won't, yeah.
So, we could entertain a motion to defer based upon the request.
If you're looking for a motion, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion to defer in a second. Thank you for offering. Further discussion? All those in favor of deferring this request signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, this is deferred.
Thank you, all those guys.
Thank you.
So, I have a question about, not so much this one, but, I mean, I get the whole thing about the PRD and the time, right? And even if, even if what you find now says our ordinance don't allow that, I think we probably need to evaluate a time limit and expiration. I, I get it, a PRD, it's just like doing zoning. And if you zone something, it's zoned until you change it. I mean, so I, I do think right now our hands are probably tied on that. But I, I certainly think for future, we need to put expiration. We have to make them come back after a year anyway, if, you know, they don't get a permit, so might be a good idea to do that. But secondary to that is, what are our options with the site plan, right? The PRD's been approved.
I wonder why we're looking at it again, really.
That was exactly my thoughts.
I rise it even here if we don't have any say. That's my question.
No, it's, it's, the site plan, it's, it's the same as any site plan you see, I mean.
They've never submitted a site plan from the PRD, right? So, this would be the first time we're actually seeing the site plan on that.
I actually think the site plan may have been approved maybe like in two thousand and seven or something like that. But, but that, well, of course, that, the site plan approval would have long since expired. And so, that's why, I mean, it's the same as any, if this were zoned R-six and they were wanting to do a townhome development on an R-six zoning, it's, it's the same reason you all would see it then as it is with this, so. And the PRD, a PUD, whatever, any type of PUD is a zoning that still has to have development plans to come to you all for review again. Whether it be site plans like this or a subdivision like you see all the time.
But materials and everything from that date still apply today. And that's my point. With design review changing as much as it has, this is fifteen years old.
Yeah, ridiculous.
Yeah.
And, and this was approved, I think, before stormwater was even in place, right?
Hmm, it was right around the time.
It would have been around the same time, because I'm thinking about all these sinkholes and how stormwater approached that at the time.
Yeah, and certainly, you know, and even with some of the vesting bills that the state of Tennessee has passed over the last few years. Stormwater is not even, that, that doesn't, you know, if you get an approval today for a site plan and the rules for stormwater and you say that expires. And you bring back the same plan and it meets all the zoning requirements, but the stormwater requirements have changed a bit, you still, you got to meet the new stormwater requirements. You, you, you don't, those don't vest, but the other zoning type issues, the parking requirements or the, you know, or the, the, you know, the elevations that were approved as part of the PUD, that sort of thing.
Are you saying parking requirements wouldn't change or would they be subject to new parking requirements?
They would, if the PRD has been approved and a certain specific development plan has been approved, that really kind of governs the zoning of that property.
We could approve it without meeting our parking requirements.
And this one meets your parking requirements, but that's not an issue, but.
Yeah, and I guess where I'm heading with it, if, if there are certain items such as stormwater that are subject to being looked at with current stormwater requirements or regs.
I couldn't something else.
Why couldn't you do that with, you know, the design review or?
Yeah, I understand where you're coming from. I think that's a fairly recent, just past couple, three, four year, whatever, change that the state legislature's put in place with regards to vesting. Once, once something has an approval. And a lot of that goes back primarily with resident, you know, like a subdivision. If phase one gets approved today and phase two and something changes in our regs and phase two gets brought in. Phase two, as long as it's within a certain timeframe, goes by phase one. We haven't changed our regs really, so it's not a big deal. But if, if phase one was approved under the old regs and phase two comes in within that certain timeframe, and I can't recall, I think it's five years or something like that. You got to go with the old regs for that development, that sort of thing. That's primarily with construction plans and requirements or whatever. But again, even the state legislature, because it's a federal thing, most of the stormwater stuff is federal, handed down to the, federal to the state and the state to us. They even exempted the stormwater regs in the legislature. So, I think we need to get a better handle on, from a zoning standpoint, does that vesting, is there a vesting in that? That's what Jeff was saying, or not?
I will give you a solid answer that you will not have a question mark after this, but.
I think I know the answer, but it's diving into.
Well, there, there, there's some three-year vesting periods, some fifteen-year vesting periods, and most of these are all per TCA. But I want to check the case law and everything else. I don't want to give you information that I don't know to be true and correct.
I've got another quick question that kind of pertains to a question Mike asked. We're asking this a lot when we have development, especially townhomes come in. Are they for sale or are they for rent? I know that's not our place to tell people how to market their product, right? That's, that's free enterprise. I'm seeing a lot of HOAs now dictating in their HOAs that they'll allow rental up to maybe fifteen percent of the product. So, we can't do anything here to require that on any approvals, can we? We can't ask them to put that into their HOA, can we?
Correct, because the HOA is a private contract between.
Right.
Two different individuals or, you know, a lot, but between two, two parties.
I would love to be able to have that authority, but.
And even just recently, this past year, past legislative session before the, the special session. They even went another step to say that even HOAs cannot forbid rentals if that person had ever rented previously. So, there's been a lot of actions to take away that even ability for HOAs, which obviously the town does not have any authority over. But even those private contracts in between individuals, the state has made it where not even the HOAs are able to enforce certain things dealing with rentals. But, but I assure you, I will get you a, a, a solid answer so that you know going forward what we can do with, with the other.
And with that question, I want to make clear that rental's a, a need for a lot of people, right? So, when we ask that question, we're, we're kind of saying we don't want the renters. That's what we're kind of alluding to. I think we have to be careful. There's good people renting property.
Right, but I, I think the concern is the large, brand-new neighborhoods where folks believe that they're moving into a, a, an owned home subdivision. And they find out that there's fifteen to twenty new locations that, that are for rent. And they may not wanted to move into a neighborhood that has so much transency. And that's usually what, what the problem is.
Thank you.
Okay, good discussion. We are now on to agenda item number six, mandatory referral. Fran Dunn, Rake Street, Smarter Senior Citizen Center Alley Abandoned.
This is just a request from Fran Dunn on behalf of the Senior Activity Center. There is an, an alleyway that is adjacent to their property. It actually, or how I say, their property, the main center building, that property. They actually own the, the adjacent tract of land that has a house on it there as well. And so, they have requested that the town abandon that portion of that alleyway that's between those two tracts of land. And then their, their plan is to kind of resubdivide, incorporate that into some of their property and resubdivide it. And so, that's what's that plat is also in your packet there. So, the planning commission just needs to review this. This is an alleyway that the town has never, it's never been improved in any way. It's just, it's just a grassed area and you all would need to make a recommendation to council on this before council can make the decision to, to divest the town of the property. And so, staff would recommend this to you.
Pretty straightforward then. Questions, Kevin?
May for approval.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? A motion is second to approve, further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This referral's approved. Next, we are now on to the November bond review report.
Yeah, there's several this month. One, first one, let's go through these quickly. The first one is Brandon's of Sam Really. This is where they changed, added another lot there or resubdivided a lot. This is for a water line to be added. That has, we still don't have the ass belts yet and they, they were working, but not completed yet. So, we would recommend, this is an escrow account, just keeping this until it's completed and then once we receive everything to release it. Burton Farms six, this is one we've had, have had it about, about three and a half years now. It's only about seventy-one or so percent built out. They did request an extension, so we would recommend an extension on this one so they get some more houses built. Amberton one, this is the end of the, or I'm sorry, this is the time to begin the maintenance period on this one. They, everything is completed, just some final cleanups and, and need the ass belts. So, we would recommend a reduction to ten thousand and extend that one year as the maintenance bond. Cedar Hills, section one, phase two. This is the end of the maintenance period on this one. This one is a hundred percent built out. If everything is completed by November thirtieth, we would recommend it be released, otherwise extend it six months. Buckingham Place, section one, also the end of the maintenance period on that one. Again, release it if all items are completed by December first, otherwise extend six months. Woodmont six B, they have stated that they're finalizing plans, going to make the repairs and place the final topping in the next two to three weeks. They did ask for an extension so they can make sure everything gets completed on that. So, we would recommend a six-month extension on that one to let them get finished up. Blakeney, section one, phase two. They're planning on finishing that out early next year, so we would recommend just an extension on that. We've actually had that one a year, so we would recommend an extension on that one to let them finish that up. Cedar Park, this is a commercial, small commercial section or subdivision kind of between Cedar Grove and Rock Springs. There's only one lot, one of those six lots has been built on. They did ask. There's only one lot, one of those six lots has been built on. They did ask for an extension. They've got two lots under contract, and would like to get some more lots built before they finalize everything there, so we would recommend a six month extension there. And then last one, Buckingham Place, section three. They, again, I haven't finished yet, still several items to be finished there. We would recommend a six month extension on that one. That's all that I've got.
Okay, we've heard the bond review report. Any questions or comments? If none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve the bond report review. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second to approve. Further discussion or questions? All those in favor of approving signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The bond review report is approved. We are on to staff comments or other business.
I don't have anything else.
Anybody? Chief? Okay, just want to make sure. We stand adjourned.